At least one.
A long time ago.
Good morning, everybody. We will call the March 20th, 2023 special budget work session to order, item 2.1.
President Baker Tilly's strategic plan document fiscal year 2023 through 2025. Council members, there is no action being requested of you today because these discussions have occurred in the public realm. We wanted to present what the final deliverable was from Baker Tilly, and that was their one-page document with their strategic plan as well as a memo describing an implementation plan for our staff to use as a stepping point or jump-off point to implement the strategic plan and direction that we are recommending as agenda item 2.2.
Any questions about the document? I mean, you've got 40 pages before you. I agree that it's an internal document, but at some point it has to morph into a public document that, and I know that's the purpose this morning of what we're here for, but at some point this document has to morph into something the public understands, not only the priorities of the council, but also how we're going to pay for it. That's one of my only questions, especially just a paragraph, too, where it says it's for internal use. I think strategic plans, at least my expectation when we started down this very lengthy road, that we would have something that citizens can look at and understand. I think this document somewhat helps, somewhat of a one-pager, but I hope we'll have more clarity at the end of today. Any other questions or comments on the Baker Tilly document? All right. You have something?
Oh, are we commenting on the attachment A, the list of department goals, as part of that or not right now? That's not?
No, that's next.
All right, that's fine. I'm all good.
Okay, item 2.2.
Provide guidance on draft strategic priorities and objectives and department work plan priorities.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kailene Castle, Budget Director. I want to quickly recap the process that been, this process that has been years in the making. Prior to this final product provided by Baker Tilly that we just spoke about, a national citizen survey was done. And we took an employee survey, and we had community, community focus groups were held, the most recent of which were four community meetings held last May in various locations across the city. The process our team used in preparing the strategic plan before you included reviewing these meetings and the planning documents provided by Baker Tilly, which provided a great foundation for us to build from. Staff further reviewed prior strategy work sessions held on April 11th, 2022, May 25th, 2021, and October 20th, 2020, with a goal to establish strategic areas of focus that have been consistently discussed for consideration in the city's overall plan. At the last workshop, you established our vision and mission and a list of organizational values that reflect the culture of our city. This draft document recommended by staff is a plan of what we intend to deliver. It includes a total of five strategic priorities and 22 individual objectives that reflect these values previously established. The intent of this time today is to allow council to collectively deliberate as to final priorities and objectives that will guide the city as a strategic plan for the next three to five years, and provide staff guidance to finalize this strategic plan document for your adoption. Once finalized for this year, remember, we will bring this back annually to clarify that these are still your priorities. This will also be at least an annual follow-up to our progress working toward these objectives. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this document.
Any questions for Ms. Castle? Vice Mayor?
It's not quite a question, but just a comment. I think this is a fantastic document. I would only add, I just would ask for one change, and that change is under environmental stewardship. The green rectangle at the top, it's the only one out of the five at the top that says "we're practical," and I would strike "we're practical." I would think that "we're practical" would apply to any one of them, and it, to me, it seems unnecessary there. Certainly, we're not going to do impractical things, and so I'd take that out.
I thought the same thing when I read that one.
But otherwise, I think it's a great document. I really do. And it's not a hierarchy, correct, from left to right or anything like that?
No.
Because I know like the county has environmental stewardship kind of in the center and different things breaking off of it, but this one is just, these are our five pillars that are equal?
Right. When we designed the document, we didn't see it in any specific order. If anything, it's kind of, again, Baker Tilly, we used as kind of our jumping point, and so the first three were basically right from Baker Tilly, and then we kind of pulled elements from them in other discussion for the last two, but it really is not a hierarchy yet. That's not the intention.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Albrecht?
So I'll play the devil's advocate here. We could all agree that "we're practical" is, you know, practical, but this is a, I know it's a living document and it can change every year, but, you know, when we're gone, maybe the next council might have somebody that is a, wants to deliver something on every, you know, something that's not practical and really drive that home. So I don't really have a problem with that. I mean, I think the objectives underneath lay out what we're going to do, and it doesn't say, it's pretty decisive on each one of what we're really going to do. What do you think?
I think you're right. I mean, yeah.
I can live with striking "we're practical." All of them should have "we're practical" at the end of.
Absolutely. I think it's implied.
I mean, it could be on all of them or none of them. It's fine. Every project's going to stand on its own, and I expect that we will have, you know, a cost benefit and a return on investment of any of the projects going forward, so. Councilmember Chater, do you have something now?
I just was thinking, just generally, under the environmental stewardship, to kind of put the business aspect into it, like cultivating or promoting relationships with present and future green businesses and technology, actually focusing on the business side of it and form partnerships and court that industry. Would be a good goal, if I might.
So add a whole new objective, another objective?
Yeah, add that whole, I get, I'm not, I mean, I didn't know if we should go under economic and housing opportunity, under economic, but, or environmental, but actually have a partnership with, with technology, green technology.
Wouldn't that go under 2.1?
Yeah, I think it goes under economic and house, I mean, economic. I don't know if I want to be as specific about what industries we want to pursue. I'm fine with that if it evolves into it, but we don't put medical, we don't put, you know, technology, we don't put finance as specific industries.
But couldn't we say businesses that practice sustainability or something like that with an eye towards?
I have "green" under quotation, and that's why I put it under environmental rather than just. But if you think it's too precise, I'm okay with that, but I did think it was worth mentioning.
I think it's a good idea, and I think it's more businesses that practice sustainability, right? Not just businesses that are in green industries.
Maybe green capacity, under environmental.
We can put it under environmental. Right. Let's get on to the list, because that's where the rubber hits the red. Yes?
First of all, I want to thank you all for today. I know that we have had many, many conversations regarding the strategic plan, and while our path was not conventional, what staff has put together for you today, I believe, is remarkable. I want to just take a brief moment to thank those that really participated in this, from finance, both Kailene and Hunter, public communications, Joelle and her team, Clerk's Office, Rose Marie, Innovation with Mica and Michael Delker putting this together. Coordination, coordinated collaboration has been the new direction from the City Manager's Office that we've been driving with staff to improve deliverables and efficiencies, and this experience is the example of the success that's possible with that kind of a focus. I also want to reiterate that while staff supports the strategic plan and their ability to complete the projects listed in the plan, there are two mission-critical objectives that we need to achieve today. The first one is for council to provide direction on the strategic plan. Secondly, to achieve some kind of consensus from council on what the true priorities from your perspective are. We have tied the work plan to the strategic goals to demonstrate how we propose to achieve being a community that thrives from Bay to Beach. These work programs and projects are how we drive results. Speaking of results, this isn't only a budget exercise, but a true strategic plan will tie what we do to why we do it, and the plan is then to tie those priorities to the goals and to our new performance evaluation system that's being implemented this year. Once the strategic plan is approved, our goal is to have a good discussion with you about these projects. They were established in part by the planning process that was led by Baker Tilly, as well as the manager's office desire to compile a list of the many things that are going on right now. We feel that these are aligned with the strategic priorities and objectives that are routinely discussed at council workshops and meetings. We are early in the budget process. We will take what is decided today via consensus and build the budget around those priorities. We understand not every project listed is fully vetted with cost and with funding mechanisms, but if these projects are moved forward as priorities, we will bring back those specific details through the budget process. This list is in addition to the ongoing day-to-day operations, services, and programming throughout the city, and in addition, the ongoing repair, maintenance, and replacement of equipment, facilities, and properties that support the day-to-day operations and infrastructure. So yes, we are busy. Today's project list represents key programs that staff has identified based on resources that are required because they're not generally expected to recur over the planning period, of which this should be about three to five years. Fear not, council will have the opportunity to see everything put together in detail as we move through the budget process. On that note, while we're early in the vetting process, I do think it's important to acknowledge that we have already received some early new budget asks that exceed $40 million. These new project updates add to existing projects that have been submitted by staff, and in most cases, they have not been vetted and therefore are not yet on this list, but there's additional things that will be brought forward. So you may see some additional projects in the proposed budget cycle. I don't want that to be a distraction for today, but just a reminder of the other projects that might also be coming forward. For today, all the departments have represented. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have about the project list. As you know, we have limited resources, and while we can't do it all, and especially all at the same time, we're hoping this discussion will help derive the prioritization of projects, and we'll fine-tune our understanding of council's level of service expectations to establish a strategic plan and attached work plan that will be the driver for our results, and we will then update this annually. So with that, we'll turn it back over to Mayor.
Any questions for Ms. Poyer? Would you like to go through these line by line, or?
It's whatever, however council wants to do this, so we can, if you have questions about anything specific, if you know that there's ones you don't want on there, if there's anything that you're in conflict with, you'd rather start there, however, you know, council wants to go through this list.
Well, I mean, the big issue has been that there are so many projects in so many different directions, and we've had a little bit of staff unrest that, you know, I understand staff wants to narrow down the scope of what they're focusing upon so that they can really put first things first, which I think is appropriate. I know that everything will be addressed in the budget. I do think some of these items are going to have to come back prior to budget because there is planning that goes on with all of them, and there's money that's being expended, and I don't know that we have unanimous support for everything. In fact, I know there's one that there is not unanimous support for, and I'm not going to reach consensus today on that, so some of these will have to come back for a vote, and I will insist upon that because I want the opportunity to vote no. So, and I think everybody needs to be on the record officially for things that they are supporting. So why don't we go down the list? I think this is very informative. This is something I asked for after I met with Ms. Poyer because this list without this list and these numbers really is not a complete picture. Vice Mayor?
So if you want to go through this list line by line, I'm okay with that. One of the questions I had over the weekend that I sent out and got a response of is, so our current general fund reserve balance is about $57.6 million. Our policy requires a reserve of 8.5% of the current general fund budget, which is $15.6 million, leaving about $41.8 available above the minimum reserve. But don't you think we should have an agreement about what we think should be in the minimum reserve? Because I think it should be more than 8.5%. So if we're going to start with an understanding of what our minimum reserve should be, then that gives us money that we're going to be allocating, at least from general funds, for some of these things, right? So before we go through and say, "Look at the funding deficit and where are we going to put our money," we have to know how much money we have to spend. No?
No, I mean, you know, again, we have to maintain the minimum reserve. We have never been remotely close to that level, at least in all the years that I've either been on council or observed council. We've always had significantly more reserves because primarily the concern about hurricanes. But the money certainly came in handy during the Great Recession, too, because one of the things that we discussed back then was, you know, do we even lower the millage rate and supplement some of our spending, which you never use ongoing money to use reserves for. You use reserves generally for one-time expenditures, and this was a very long debate back in '08, '09. Mr. Ravens would remember it. Were you around? You were around?
Yeah, I wasn't. My history.
Yeah. But we were debating whether the Great Recession was a permanent fixture in our economy or was it just a point in time? And so we dove in and used some of the reserves rather than raising the millage rate because property values had declined precipitously with the real estate market going, going to pot. But just understand, if you want to raise the actual level of reserves, that's a, rather than just having an agreement amongst council that is not binding in any way, those are very different things. I mean, I would never expect us to go back to spend everything down to the eight and a half level.
No. I would think we would want, like, at least 20% kept in reserves.
Do you have any thoughts, Mr. Ravens? I mean, I'd have to see a long history, maybe Ms. Castle has it, of, you know, the lowest levels we ever got with reserves over the minimum.
Jay Ravens, Finance Director. I will share that the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, has a best-practice recommendation of a minimum of two months of reserves, which approximates 16.67%. They also qualify that, based on where you are geographically, if you're exposed to storms, it's recommended that you actually go higher than that, but that's, that's the minimum that they recommend. Now, I do need to counter that we have always been comfortable with the eight and a half percent because we also have central insurance fund reserves. We maintain those for our self-insurance, but it provides us with available funds that could be used in the case of an emergency to, to fund recovery. So we have that kind of, in addition to the eight and a half percent that has, that has caused us to feel comfortable with our reserve level at least being comparable to the GFOA recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Ravens? I think I'd like to go into the unfunded priorities and really, you know, to me, page two of this is more important than page one, which has the staff's priority one, two, and three. So my understanding is, is that there is more and more interest in building a new city hall/MSP facility. The price tag that we have on that now is $90 million. So there is an unfunded gap of about $60 million. Any questions about that? Is that a priority for everybody other than me?
It's a priority for me.
And you desire to have a consolidated city hall?
I think that's a good, a good move.
Can I ask you, we also have municipal service building renovations here as being funded. How much money from that could be going to building a new city hall with the MSB building?
I would think all, but.
It's a small project that we started creating a few years ago when, basically, when we knew there would be some sort of form of new city hall because everything in the MSB, the furniture and fixtures need to be replaced. But it couldn't necessar, it wouldn't be all because PD is the same age. The PD building is the same age as MSB, so it was really built to fund new furniture and fixtures in both of those buildings with a consistent brand that was in a new city hall. So it would be a lot of it, but the current balance is listed on this. It's only like $2 million, and it wouldn't be able to be all because, again, we would still have to fund PD renovations.
So the MSB opened in what year, mid-'90s?
I think it was around '96, '95.
Yeah, '96.
Okay.
And do we have any idea how much we could get back by redeveloping the property where the MSB building is now?
So I know that we did some preliminary looking at that and the building as it stands, and I think Denise can give us a little bit more specifics, between three and five million.
Three to five million?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions about that? Councilmember Chater, are you on board with building a whole new complex?
Yes, I, I've been, I find it very challenging in revitalizing downtown when we have limited available space. So the idea of emptying out MSB and opening that up for redevelopment, to me, is a really good reason to do this. I also like consolidation. I like everything in under one building, and I think that a city of this size warrants that. So I am of that mindset.
Councilmember Albrecht, you're on board with that, too?
Yeah, I am. Council's been talking about a new city hall for over two decades and always been putting it off because there's other things that are, that crop up that are better. So it's not a new idea. It's an old idea that I think, you know, here we are now in an office building, and we've been in there over five years. I anticipated that we'd have a new city hall by the end of the first lease. We're extending the lease now because at least we're heading in the direction of a new city hall. So I'm on board with doing it. I know it's, it's, I know you're not on board with it, but it's something we've been talking about for a long time, and Clearwater deserves it, I think. And I think putting everything in one building instead of all over the place is just a good operating procedure. We have the land for it, and the new building will be good. I think the MSB, I know I've been talking about that for four years, about the remodeling of that, and, and that was considerable amount of money to bring the building apartment down on the first floor and open it up more like the county does with the driver's license facility. And we don't have to do that now. We can build it right into the city hall, so. So I'm on board with it.
Okay, we'll move on then. I'm going to reserve my comments to the end of the meeting on that topic.
Mayor?
Yes, Denise.
Denise Sanders, Economic Development and Housing. So regarding the figures that Jennifer provided, some slight modifications. So we found that the land value of the MSB only would be approximately $3.6 million or $50 a square foot. For office, MSB only $5.8, $5.9 million or $75 a square foot. If it were to be used for family, multi-family housing redevelopment to include the garage, we found that the, again, the MSB, about $3.6 million, value of the garage, $7.5, based on $11,000, or, excuse me, $15,000 per parking unit.
The garage?
If, if the garage were to go with that MSB land, in other words, if we were to do.
So we're talking about building a whole new garage for the new city hall as well?
Not suggesting that. I'm telling you what the values were that we found when we were asked to look at all scenarios.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wow. I'm glad we looked into that. All right. Moving from the sublime to the absurd. All right, new public works complex. This I absolutely do believe in. We do have a $26 million deficit. Can we hear about all the things that would be included in this? Is there any additional land required?
This is going to be over in the.
Good morning. Tara Kivitt, City Engineer. The plan is to use the current public works site.
And what is the temporary for that? We have enough land that we can build the new complex while still functioning?
We would do it in phases. We're looking at, you know, at least three phases so that we can accommodate people in their offices, build a new, then move them over, demo, and start a new phase.
Do we have an estimate of how much more that costs to phase it?
No.
Are there any other sites that we could put it at?
Not that I'm aware of that would be large enough, but we, I haven't taken a deep dive in it. I think some other people have.
It could go on the landings, couldn't it? 72 acres, for heaven's sakes. We don't have to go through a referendum?
Possibly.
Why wouldn't we have to go through a referendum?
Because we're not selling it or leasing it.
But I thought it was zoned. But I thought it was zoned for... It's park open space recreation.
It's OSR.
I think that would be a problem, in fact, because it is zoned, OSR.
For our own purposes?
Yeah, because I think the rubric that applies there is... I don't know that we could develop or maintain it as anything other than OSR, at least not without referendum. So, I do think that's correct. I think we'd have to go to referendum to develop or maintain it as anything other than OSR right now. I mean, the OSR category, you know, has some gray area, but I think it would be difficult to argue that a Public Works complex is OSR.
Okay. So, do we have design going on with this right now, or...
No, we put a pause on this project until this discussion happens. So, we have a draft RFQ ready, which would solicit a design firm. And this is a multi-year project, you know, out to about '28, '29.
And so, Ms. Poyer, what is the anticipated path for funding the deficit?
That's something that we would be bringing forward through a bunch of processes. Why we need the direction here in terms of how we do that. Mayor, with all of these things, we can certainly pursue all of that, but that takes considerable resources to do that for projects that aren't going to be moved forward. So, happy to vet every single one on here and spend the resources to do that. Just please understand what that takes.
Well, I'm having problems sitting here, looking at this list and looking at the bottom line of a deficit of a quarter of a billion dollars. So, you know, I don't know if we want to determine what the bucket is that we're going to be drawing from or if we're willing to bond a certain percentage of this deficit. But without coming to a conclusion on the money first, in my opinion, it's very difficult to prioritize. You guys have different math than I do.
Well, that's why...
Maybe you do, but I don't know how you prioritize these without determining how much of a financial commitment we're willing to make, either through bonding or through digging into reserves. And if somebody has a different, you know, opinion or rubric, as our city attorney likes to use, I'd like to understand it.
Well, I think, you know, just to say, that's why I had asked at the beginning, like, what's our comfort level with keeping a certain amount in reserves, which I would advocate for, you know, about 20 percent? And then I think we need to understand what's the, you know, tax revenue expected, like, going forward. I mean, we've been increasing. And so, you know, is that...
We have that in the next item. We have the forecast, 3.1. So, right now, Mr. Ravens has us, you know, holding the millage rate level through 2033. But income starts to drop, and the reserves start to drop as well, all the way down to 1.6 million in excess reserves by 2033. Do you want to talk about that, Mr. Ravens?
Yes, the reality is there's limited resources. This prioritization is critical to determine how we spend what we have and what is significant enough to either issue bonds for or raise millage, the millage, or both, how aggressive council wants to be in pursuing projects that you deem to be priorities. Without council's priorities, you're relying on staff to... Well, let me back up. We could bring you a funding plan for, let's say, all of the priorities. You're not going to like it. You're going to say that's not acceptable because of the level of borrowing and the debt service impact on the general fund, and that creates the need to raise property tax. So, what we were driving for with this was at least some of your high priorities that we can focus on and then come back to you with a plan via the budget process of how we would pay for that, that might be acceptable and might not. But without your prioritization, we've got to prioritize everything. That's obviously priority one and anything on the two or three level that you'd like bumped up to a one. But we're really looking for a little more of a hierarchy because, again, we can't do everything, and I don't think anyone expects us to. We don't have... it's not only the money, it's the staff resources that we've got to be able to execute. And we've seen that with the water sewer utility with aggressive capital plans, that they have to be realistic. You have to have the resources to be able to execute. So, that was kind of the emphasis on this early prioritization, is to get a feel for, again, is City Hall the highest and ultimate priority? Because it almost has to be with a $60 million gap. And it's going to cause a lot of the other priorities to fall off. That's the sort of things we're looking for because it's got to be realistic.
Thank you, Mr. Ravens. You said what I'm going to say at the end of the meeting. Councilmember Albritton?
So, with that said, you know, I look at this and instead of having an equal balance, I think we need to go through here and say, what is... what are our pri... What do we think is important? And rate them in the order of importance. And then we go back over it and say, okay, can we... Because we've got a City Hall with a $60 million deficit, what are some of the things that we can drop off here in order to... what would we feel comfortable, as a council, to move forward? You know, again, I'm going to stand firm on City Hall because I've seen us talk about this for so long, and there's always other priorities, and it keeps getting bumped. So, I think we need to go through here and see what is most important and what we can... I think the main thing is, what could we put off in order to keep some of the things that we think are important that need to move on?
So, I'm hearing that City Hall is your number one priority. Is that the case?
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. Well, then, you all need to choose what your number two, three, four, and five?
Well, I had a few questions as we're looking through these things. So, it seems, you know, a lot of these projects are about the ability of the city to do business and to perform the functions of government, aside from, you know, the new City Hall, which is part of it. I mean, we're maintaining a lot of the wave intenuators, the renovations and the parking garage and all that stuff. It's... and some improvements. So, we have the new Public Works and the new City Hall. Other things are kind of the cost of doing business and maintaining things. I had a question about... And I remember that, I think it was the $90 million price tag on that ADA transition plan and improvements. So, I had a question about, we still haven't seen that report. And I... and the group that studied it and composed the report said, "Look, you know, you don't have to do everything all at once, and it's a process, and you just have to show that you're working towards that compliance." So, you know, I... my question was, do we have any increased liability if we're not taking care of some of those big things that might have been articulated in the ADA report? So, just a little bit of protection there if we need to put more money there?
Ms. Poyer, I mean, as long as we're making a good faith effort moving towards it, that's what the government looks at.
Yeah, and the report was provided to Tammy. She's going to be distributing it to all of council. She hasn't already since she was sitting in here. But I know that Billy, HR Director, can provide additional information as well because she's been working on this since her last...
Good morning, Council, Billy Kirkpatrick, HR. Jennifer is correct. As long as we are working toward, you know, kind of chipping away at that plan, we're fine. A lot of the work was sort of overstated by the vendor as far as the expense, and much of it is also already in progress. So, General Services is going to be kind of knocking off some of the facility fixes off the list, and Public Works already has an ongoing project for repair and replacement that would solve a lot of the right-of-way issues, which has funding.
Okay, great.
Okay.
And then I had a question about... There was a question about some of the infra... I had a question about the infrastructure bill and the IRA bill and from the federal government about whether or not we have funding opportunities there, grant opportunities. I know there's a May deadline for some things, but, you know, would it be wise to put some staff right, you know, to pursue those types of opportunities when we have a small window to get some funding to offset some things? And I'm wondering if our federal lobbyists can weigh in on that or, you know...
So, our federal lobbyist does advise me when there are opportunities for grant funding, whether it's the appropriation or a grant funding or a NOFIS release. They do share that information with me, and the grants coordinator does share that information with staff. Staff then reviews, in addition to the grant coordinator, they both review what those requirements are for the grant funding. And if it's something that does meet, we're able to pursue it, then we pursue. But it's not just because there's a funding opportunity that we're going to go ahead and apply. Sometimes there are restrictions that staff feels is not in the best interest of the city to pursue.
Okay. Is it capacity sometimes or not? It's not about capacity?
It's not capacity. I think it's really along the lines of restrictions. For instance, if we wanted to pursue something with a beach marina, we've been looking at, there have been a couple of grant opportunities, but we have not been able to pursue those grant opportunities because of the restrictions. It would then not be able to make enough revenue, or we would be making less revenue because we would be restricted on making any additional revenue because of the slips. And so, there's different functions that we have over on the beach marina or even over in Seminole that we can't pursue those grant opportunities. So, it's really a matter of reviewing what our needs are, what the grant program entails, are there any restrictions? And then if there are any questions, we do engage legal to make sure that they have... they give us their opinion as well.
Okay. I was thinking maybe the fleet fueling station renovation might have IRA grant opportunities. It's 1.4 million here. And then I had a question, too, about the community redevelopment area, Container Village program, says not funded. We don't have any estimates at all. But on the line under comments, it's North Greenwood CRA startup funding, which we have $5 million set aside for that. I was wondering if it could also pull from the 3.3 that we have set aside of ARPA funds for housing? I mean, again, I don't... we don't have any estimates, but we do have possible two buckets to pull from for that line item, maybe?
So, yes and no. Denise Sandersen, Economics Development and Housing. So, that... I responded to Ms. Poyer last evening. That is partially funded. In November, when we set aside $2 million for the list provided by the Urban Leadership Coalition, we identified that... or we... council agreed that we would fund those activities substantially as provided in that list. And within that list, the very last item is a mini mall for $500,000. That is the Container Village concept. So, it is partially funded. My understanding is there's an expectation that it may exceed that. There's still a lot of work to do before anything were to go forward with that. So, it is partially funded. Regarding the $3.3 million for affordable housing, as council approved that also on November 3rd, none of those dollars could go to the Container Village, as I understand the concept for the Container Village. It is restricted to affordable housing programs only.
A container village is for retail and not for living? It's not tiny homes for living?
My understanding is it is for commercial.
Okay. And that's what that means here? Area Container Village program means commercial?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. So, that would pull from the five million startup? That makes sense, then?
Correct. $500,000 currently is set aside for that, based on your action in November.
Okay. Then how come we don't have $500,000 here and already funded?
I believe it was an error.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Councilmember Albritton?
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor? Could we go ahead and talk about these high dollar amounts first and kind of go down from there? Because, I mean, we could talk about knocking 1.5 million dollars and $5 million, but...
Well, I think that's what we were doing with City Hall and Public Works.
Well, we got those...
I need a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Okay? Okay?[375.69]
Our work session is back in session. A little surprised, saddened, shell shocked, Councilmember Bunker said. You know, people make significant decisions about their life or work every single day, and a lot of factors weigh in on that. I have no idea why Mayor Hibbard chose to resign today. I'm just as surprised as anyone. But the work goes on, and there's work to be done today, and staff has put an incredible amount of time and effort and preparation for this meeting. And you are all asking for direction about our priorities. And so that's what we're here to do, is to do our job and give that direction to you. So we will do our best to do that today with our remaining time. Does anybody want to make any comments before we start going through our financial priority list?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Again, yes, a big shock. I wanted to tell staff, City of Clearwater, that we will get through this. We've still got four council members up here. And we'll get through this process and move forward. And I know it's a shock for everybody, but the city is still on track. We're still on track to make decisions here, and I don't want anybody freaking out right now about this. We've got enough people up here to make the decisions and keep everything on track. So that's what we plan to do today.
All good? All right. So we're looking at the document that has project program name at the top, priority one. We've already had given direction on the development of a new city hall, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Development of a new public works complex. We have it as underfunded, total funding deficit of close to $26 million. How do we want to proceed with that? Is that a top-tier priority?
In my book, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bunker, top-tier priority?
You know, we've created this public works department. It may be a necessity.
Okay. Councilmember Albritton.
Okay, so I think we're all on board with public works that the last city manager put together. And this is going to be, I think, at the utilities site, right? Utilities. And it's going to be a phased project. It looks like we've got, we have some funds under utilities to go toward that?
Rich Gardner, Public Utilities? Yes. We have funds. There's nothing been set aside yet, but we have funds in the reserve that I would work with Jay to get the public utilities funds. It's, there's, it's public utilities, which is an enterprise fund, which isn't going to affect the general fund. Soil and water is an enterprise fund. Some of the people that are currently housed at MSB would go to this public utilities complex, so it'd be a small decrease in the size of the new city hall if that's conjoined. I don't know how many of you have been to the public utilities complex out there, but it's, it's been just pieced together over the years, patchwork. My office is like 10 feet from the airfield where they start up the helicopters. And I'll be on a conference call, and people say, "What's going on?" We have, we have, our uniform changing room is in one building, and 100 feet away is where the people work. The, in our break room, our break room is adjacent to the men's room. It just was pieced together over the years. If we get a storm of any size that actually hits Clearwater, the public utilities complex will be knocked down. It'll be in disrepair, just when we need the people in Stormwater and Public Utilities to respond to the storm. We had, I think it was Irma, it knocked out electricity, and because we don't have a generator, we had people working from MSB temporarily until we could get it back.
Well, I've been out there, and I've seen the complex. It's kind of sprawling, and it is piecemeal. But I think what we're going to determine today, if I'm right, is the importance of what and how we're going to pay for it. You all will come back and say, "Here's how we're going to break it out." So...
In each step, we would bring it back to council. So if you approve the importance and we start the design, well, that would come back to council to be approved. If we start the construction, that's going to come back to council to be approved, maybe in separate pieces.
Okay. Thank you, Rich.
The refined project estimate at $53 million is refined, does that mean most recently? Those are real current numbers?
Yeah, current numbers, but it's still, we haven't started design, so those are very fluid numbers.
Right. Okay. All right. We're clear that, yeah, Councilmember Tish.
Sorry to interrupt. I just, I just need a couple of questions answered before I, in my mind, rank things, because then I don't completely understand what I'm ranking. So talking about the main library renovations and improvements, is that something we can hold off until we have a more depth conversation about what we're actually going to do with the library, instead of making renovations and then having to adapt the new, I guess, functions? Can we just, can, in other words, I know it's funded, but is it too early to do it? Or are the renovations not very much so necessary?
Well, right now, I understand that our direction is to pursue the accommodation of Penny Lane Museum as part of the library, so that makes it what I would call a priority one item right now. I think the Penny Lane folks are rather anxious to get going in terms of construction. So we're within about halfway through a 60-day period of conceptualization, the first floor that would accommodate a Penny Lane Museum, and as I understand it from y'all's direction, a café as a component of that. So as long as that remains your objective, then that's going to be a priority one item to be, to move forward this year, frankly.
It's been finalized?
So the contract in terms of, you know, we're still negotiating with Penny Lane, that would be coming forward in terms of after we have the conceptual...
That's correct. We've got a draft of a, an agreement with them, but it's not finalized.
Okay. And then my next question is the site plan for North Ward. Can just talk me through why have a conceptual site plan versus just have an RFP to see what is out there?
We've had an RFP on that project. We had limited responses. The response that we did get, I think we've had some prior conversation about that, was not a development plan that we really thought much of in terms of, you know, the design and what was provided for the site. At one point, we initiated, or we're going to initiate a conversation with a one applicant or the one proposer for that property, but we've not done that. So I think right now what we're looking at is considering whether or not we make enough of a level of improvements to the building to make it occupiable, which right now it's not occupiable because of lack of accessibility and that sort of thing to the second floor, and really prepare it, and then, and then see if we can have better luck with somebody who may offer an adaptive reuse of the site. So, you know, frankly, there's multiple options, neither one of which is, there are no perfect solutions for that. You know, that project originally estimated to make it occupiable was in the $2 to $2.5 million range. So we've had the North Ward for several years, and that's one of the reasons why we, you know, internally thought that maybe would be fairly high, because we want to get started using the North Ward for some, something. We need to move it off a dime, so to speak, so...
And then my last question is the Fort Harrison corridor improvements. And that's, what is it, 1550? What is exactly, does that entail? What improvements is it, are you talking about restructuring of the road or just utilities and upgrading it?
That, no, go ahead.
Hello, Tara Kinnett, City Engineer. It's a complete infrastructure redo along with improving the drivability safety of the corridor, all the way from the Apex, which is where it meets down the Bel Air.
And I would add, if I may, Councilperson, that that's also an economic development opportunity for us. I think from the planning side, we believe that redesign of Fort Harrison into a complete street will encourage the continuation of our urban development pattern through Fort Harrison and support the Old Bay District and the Seminole area. So there's an opportunity there, I think, from an economic development project, as well as just the street infrastructure improvements that are needed. It's consistent, rebuilding of Fort Harrison into a more urban corridor is consistent with the implementation of the North Marina Master Plan as well as the North Greenwood Plan.
So it's from the North Greenwood to...
Bel Air.
Bel Air. So we're actually going to be redoing what we did a few years ago? Right? Because Fort Harrison was, no?
No.
I remember that.
There may have been some utility work, but this is a complete infrastructure of public utilities, water, sewer, reclaim, storm, fiber, everything.
In terms of drivability, what do you mean by that?
Some complete street concepts.
You can take the area of downtown?
Yes.
Not changing the lanes or any of that for me?
There may be some lane repurposing.
That's a good idea.
You know, we're looking, we're looking at all sorts of things. Right now, the first phase is a few blocks north of Drew, to the north end up by the Apex. Design is at about 60%. Like public works, it's also being funded by some, mostly enterprise funds, storm, sewer. We're using some of our roadway millage to do the resurfacing.
Councilmember Albritton?
Okay, so what is, what's, I guess the utilities is different than the complete streets project, because my understanding, complete streets is a funded project through Fort Penellas? Is that correct?
Not...
Fort Harrison is not.
No, not for Fort Harrison. They funded the planning study when we did the complete streets, I think it was 2018, on Drew.
Yeah, but I thought we also did Fort Harrison, and then we're going to do a temporary restriping.
Right, we are, planning is probably better to talk about that. They did do a complete street at Fort Harrison. I'm not sure it was funded by Fort Penellas, though.
We did a temporary restructuring of a small segment of Fort Harrison a few years ago as a kind of a trial that provided some on-street parking and that sort of thing, but that's the one we're implementing.
Good morning, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development. Fort Penellas funded the actual complete streets study that was done, but they have not funded construction.
Really? Okay. I thought that was in our tip through the FDOT, because I thought that was really going to be something that happened before Drew Street actually happened, because it was a simpler project. Have to look into that.
I'll verify it, but, I mean, I know the funding was that for the actual conceptual plans for all of Drew Street. And then Tara, Public Works, has funding to actually construct all the infrastructure improvements, and then we would be implementing some of the complete streets recommendations when they do that project. And I think they're building in some demonstration projects on this first section, so try out some of the recommended improvements before we actually commit to the actual capital improvement.
All right. Well, I'd like to look into, to see if the, well, the tip's usually out five years, so if we're doing the temporary change, I want to see if that could get on the transportation impact program.
I'll double check, just to make sure that I'm not missing something.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All good here? Okay. So what direction do we want to give on development of new public works complex? It's a top priority?
Yeah.
And keep it on the, okay. Fantastic.
Oh, excuse me. I wanted to clarify that as part of this, you know, we did a master plan a few years ago and looked at the space needs analysis. It is including all of the parks and beautification staff at the Vine Street facility, which is also a very old facility, so they'll be moving over into this bigger public works complex.
Okay. The fleet fueling station renovation. So this is 1.4, funded by Garage Fund, Reserves and Consolidation of Beach Radio Tower Project. So what's our, does anybody want to give an overview of this? And then we can discuss.
Right, we're getting ready to pull the trigger on this. Actually, we have an estimate from a contractor. This needs to get done due to some FTEP concerns out there.
Okay.
Well, it's good to know if it needs to get done.
All good?
Good.
Okay. Fantastic. Needs to get done, it gets done. The Long Center Naterium Improvements. So, yeah, this is, this is tricky. This is a different kind of animal here. So, Mr. Cader, thank you for an update.
Art Cader, Interim Parks and Recreation Director. Good morning. This project is actually partially funded, and it is a long center naterium. It is well over 20 years old. We have issues on the interior of the pool. It is an Olympic-sized pool, as you know, one of four, I believe. There may be somebody else that have built one, but we know four in the state of Florida. It's very popular. It is at the Long Center. It has problems with humidity. There's, the HVAC system is gone, and this project basically is to look at the entire structure. If you've ever been out there, you've seen the glass windows all the way up to the top creates, it's beautiful. However, it does create some issues, and that, this project is basically to correct all of that and provide an HVA system, a humidity system, and be able to look at the structure itself. It may not be to replace all the windows. It may be actually to build walls and those types of things. As you recall, there are two pools there, one Olympic-sized pool and the other a therapy pool. They both, one you keep at one temperature, one you keep the other. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, too. I believe we have funding of about $12 million, but we're underfunded by about $2. Is that correct?
Planned funding in the current CIP is $12 million, and new estimates are what you have here, the 14.
There's several options that could be had, obviously, that we are looking at. One could be to take the roof down completely, have it outdoors. Second would be to just take all the windows out and again have a roof over it, but it'll be outdoors. And then the third one would be to take the current and keep an indoor naterium the way that it is right now.
What was that last option, to keep it the way it is right now?
What I mean by keep it the way it is now, interior, have an interior closed-in naterium.
Okay.
One of, like I said, four in the state of Florida. It's very popular, as you know, and a lot of people come here for, out of state, for meets and those types of things.
Priority level? Keep it at the top? Councilmember Bunker?
I wouldn't put it at the top, but if, you know, part of our plan is sports tourism, and we're having meets here, you know... You know, it, it sounds like something we should be doing. I don't know if it needs to be done right now.
Well, it don't, it will, well, something will have to be done and I'm not sure of the cost, but we will have to repair some of the metal infrastructure that's underneath, you know, the, holding the roof up, those types of things. There's rusting there.
Damage is being done, right? Because we're not.
Each and every day that goes on.
Yep.
It will continue to simply get worse. And at some point, we'll just have to close the pool and not be able to do it because of the site.
All right. I'm Troy.
I think since it's, the majority is funded and it's going to continue to deteriorate and I've heard about this for quite a while, I think we should keep it.
I think so too. Uh, you know, at another time, maybe we could have numbers on the economic impact of having that Olympic pool here. You know, just to know what the payoff is. If colleges and different clubs are using it, what, what the revenue generation stream is.
We could certainly do that. The other issue is it is, it, it allows our residents and visitors here year-round access to swimming pools. We closed down all the other pools. We do not have, we do have some access to heated pools outdoors. However, this pool is used year-round for swim lessons and a, and a lot of things.
Competitions, yep.
It, it's used a lot.
Yep, I know that.
Local teams and.
And travel teams, com, college, yep. Okay, fantastic.
I would add on that one. I mean, that's, Kayleen, hi.
Oh, sorry.
So, this is kind of what Jennifer was talking about. It's a scope definition too. So the numbers on this sheet is replacing in-kind, which is, you know, he told you there is several other options. So that would be clarity from you too. So this deficit of two million is replacing in-kind. So we would want your direction that that's how you want to go. You want to replace in-kind an indoor pool.
Um, I thi, the RFQ is structured based on some earlier direction from council to look at different options. Remember that? So they're going to be looking at maybe even a whole new location, redoing it outdoors. So that's part of the project.
So we still will have an option to at least try to keep it in that, of a twelve million dollar budget versus fourteen.
Right.
Still have that option.
But I think Kayleen's pointing out that, um, the budget may change if some of those other options are explored.
I think we'd want to keep the most reasonable option. I mean, the lowest cost option, right? I mean, and if that means walls or working with the existing structure, right?
Well, as part of the analysis, we'll look at long-term maintenance. Cause that's obviously a big issue now. So that will all be part of what we will bring back to make that final determination.
You have capacity to do that? You, to do that extensive study to figure out what the best?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, could, who, who we hire will do that.
All good?
There's a difference in cost in just a cover and an enclosed pool. So if an enclosed pool is a priority, that's kind of the direction that we.
That's what you want to know? Is an enclosed pool a priority?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think, uh, changing that would, would impact the success of that pool. If we would do it outdoors, it would just be one of many. So I would still believe that would be indoors.
Any thoughts? Keep it indoors? I have no concept of the other three Olympic sized pools in the state. Are they all enclosed? Is that, you know, best practices to have them enclosed?
I could do.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
So I've been swimming there for years and my kids have been there. I've been to many swim meets and I usually look, I usually don't sit up in the balcony, which is up high toward the ceiling because it's like four hundred percent humidity up there and it's hot. I usually look through the windows. So I've always kind of said, would be a good idea to have opening windows or some kind of, something you could roll up and have this, the fresh air come in there. So I'd like to have the options shown to me on the different options, what could be done before we really proceed on that, if that's possible. I mean, I'm okay with approving this. Some, something needs to be done to it, to, to preserve it. But, um, I've kind of always said, you know, it'd be nice to be able to open it completely up. Where, especially up high in the section where the people sit and they look down on the pool, that that's, they get some fresh air up there.
Well, the original intent, I think, of the pool, as you know, those windows actually opened on the lower level, but it didn't help up, up top. That's why we put the air conditioning system in there that, uh, didn't do well. To answer your question though, the four I was referring to are indoor, uh, Olympic sized pools. There are many Olympic sized pools in the state of Florida. So, but they're all outdoors. I think even St. Pete has one. Um, I'm not sure if Largo has one, but I'm talking about indoor, uh,
Fully enclosed.
Yeah.
Fully enclosed.
Which, which helps with lightning and scheduling meets and all that stuff. We need to have them in, enclosed. So the direction is enclosed, Kayleen?
That's what, I mean, I think that's what we're hearing from you.
Yep. Okay.
And that, that's a, that's a metric pool. I mean, it's a long, big pool. It's not just a twenty-five yard Olympic.
Right. Okay. Um, development of Clearwater Air Park amenities, operation center corporate and tea hangers, pavement maintenance, underfunded by, six hundred thousand dollars we have here. Um, and then we're expecting money from, um, the state, correct? Mr. Gandy, want to fill us in?
Good morning, Eric Gandy, Marine and Aviation Director. So the easiest way to look at this, um, is they're separate projects. Per the lease agreement with Fly USA, we're responsible for the deferred maintenance projects, the R and R stuff, which is the pavement conditions out there that I've spoken about previously. So that project are, is already in the pipeline. We have, uh, grant funding that we're pursuing on these projects. So when we say underfunded here for some of the R and R stuff, it's simply because two things, we are, uh, it's contingent upon a grant fund. So we're not sure just yet. But ultimately, uh, some of them will require general fund support. The revenues, as I've described previously, weren't sufficient to deal with that R and R stuff. So, um, as far as the, uh, maintenance projects, we're talking about the Mill and Overlay project and then about fourteen thousand feet of security fencing around the perimeter. So those may require general fund support, um, in the future because our reserves can't cover those. As far as the amenities, the terminal, parking lots, uh, additional hangers, those are spoken to in the lease agreement. And the same thing applies, uh, contingent upon the grant funding and then reimbursement from Fly USA. So should the grant funding come in, we expect to, those projects to be funded. And, uh, we will negotiate those prices with Fly USA, uh, in terms of those projects to, to ensure that both of us get a good deal and it's a good business decision.
Any idea when we know about the grant funding award?
So, um, we are waiting to hear back from FDOT for the Mill and Overlay. Like I said, that project is in the pipeline. We're actually waiting for the grant now that I'll bring before you. So that's been on the priority list, um, uh, for quite some time actually, and it should come to fruition shortly. And I'll be before you. Um, the, the challenge with that one will be it's about one point six million to, to do all that pavement. Um, and then our, our contribution's about three hundred and twenty thousand and our reserves are, you know, five fifty or so. So, therein lies the challenge. I, I can't do too many of those projects without GF support at some point or, or alternate funding.
But it's minor amount. I mean, it's not huge amounts.
Yeah, correct.
All good? Follow through with this commitment? Okay. Um, Seminole docks, pier replacement. We have underfunded, currently available, about two point five million. And then over here, you've got relocate project funding, no additional need.
So, um, last summer, we, my crews went out and inspected, um, the, the piers that support those boat ramps. There's eight launch ramps and, uh, five piers and then five floating docks. Uh, upon inspection, they had a failure. We had to condemn one of the docks. Uh, we've been working with engineering. They have a design and they're currently going out to bid for the, uh, uh, construction of those. What we did is made a, a decision in terms of, uh, funding that was allocated for an amenity. There is an additional floating dock that was proposed out there as part of the North Marina District. I really believe that our focus needs to be on R and R and maintaining what we have as opposed to adding another amenity. And in this case, we should, we, we're not sure yet, that two point four million that we're allocating from the amenity should be enough to cover these, um, piers and docks. Critical project, one of the busiest launch facilities in Pinellas County. Um, we know because during the height of the pandemic, we had to turn two and three hundred people away a day uh, because of the demand. So, uh, we're looking to phase that project, uh, because we're coming into a peak season. So hopefully, um, you know, we'll, we'll move that along. But like I said, that two point four million should cover it. We anticipate it coming in. A, a guess limit is under a million, but we just have to wait and see what the contractors give us.
Okay. All good. Any questions? Do you need any more direction about that? Okay. Um, I think we briefly covered ADA transition plan and improvements. We don't occur, uh, incur any additional liability as long as we're making steps forward. All good?
Yes.
Oh, and I just want to point out, so, I mean, we have a lot of money that's allocated to this. And so as we continue to move through that, that's not all that's going to need to be funded, meaning all at once. Or even at that level, because some of the stuff that's in there has already been completed. So we'll have additional information on that, so.
Okay. So, but when it says approved future funding at one point, or, yeah, one point eight million, can we take that money and move it somewhere else or it stays there for ongoing improvements? And, and is it like?
The approved future funding, that whole column is basically what is in the approved capital plan, like in the current year's budget.
Okay.
So that is the three hundred thousand we've allocated a year. Um,
Going for.
Basic, yeah.
Okay.
Cause, you know, at the point that we established this, we really didn't know and we still don't totally know. Um, so, I mean, we could tweak it down the more we know, but I mean.
Don't recommend tweaking it down. I mean, we need to have it, yeah.
But we, we'll know more along this budget process to see that it's three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, okay.
But using, using forty-nine million dollars as a, but total funding deficit, we can revisit that to see what the actual amount's going to be?
Right, we don't anticipate it to be that much.
Yeah.
The biggest part is right-of-way. So maybe that three hundred needs to shift into the streets and sidewalks project. So, I wouldn't necessarily say that it's available because the, the right-of-way is the biggest piece of that.
Okay.
And, um, you know, we do fund ongoing, an ongoing project using the road millage, but I'm sure it can always use a little more.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Main Library renovations and improvements. Um, and this is to accommodate Penny Lane and
Cafe.
And the cafe.
And it's funded.
And it's funded. All right. Um, we okay with the citywide utility and infrastructure repair and replacement projects that are funded? We have no dollar amounts here, but.
This ju, is to represent all the ongoing work in public utilities, stormwater, that we have funded in the plan. We bring rate studies to you every few years. So for the, in the most case, you know, you'll see this every year, but it's, it's funded or will be funded in their rate plans.
Okay.
Okay.
All good?
Yeah.
All right. These wave attenuators that I saw here underfunded by five million dollars. I thought this was pretty much a necessity to protect our, um, assets.
So, I was before you about a year ago now, um, because we had three wave attenuators that were suffering progressive failures. At that time, council, uh, approved funding for those. And, uh, we're moving along that project. The installation should be, uh, early this summer. So that project is funded. So it's a little complicated here. It's the South Basin, South attenuators are funded. The South Basin has a series of three attenuators in the north corner that had some failures during Ian. We're pursuing, um, insurance FEMA and, um, we are awaiting a work order on the design. If, if it tracks with the other three, I'm anticipating we're in two and a half to three million dollars. After the first three, we worked with finance and we, we allocated some funding for future years. But as I spoke to you previously, these things are obscenely expensive. Um, so, that being said, there's thirty around the facility. We've talked about the progressive failures over time. So I, I, I anticipate this will be a recurring problem over the next decade. Uh, but th, this is a group of three, then again, on the north corner of the South Basin that, um, we're dealing with right now. So we're waiting for the design component, estimated costs and so on. And I'll be before council again with that project. But essentially, what happens to them is, is they begin to fail and crack. They take on water and they list and, and, and create some problems. So they protect that basin and it just so happens that the South Basin bears the, the brunt of the, the wave activity and that's why we believe that those failures are taking place. We have a contract with the engineering firm to do a twenty-year master maintenance plan for us that will, hopefully allow us to kind of budget going forward for these things and, and understanding which are in danger of failing.
When do you expect to have that?
We were waiting for the work order, uh, this last week. Uh, I don't know if it's come in this morning or not, but, uh, we'll, we'll be back before you once we get some definitive, uh, pricing and estimates on the project. Like I said, if it tracks with the other one, they're about seven hundred thousand or so a piece to, to put in.
So we do have a contract with a firm that will help us budget for twenty years out?
Well, yeah, we have a twenty-year master maintenance plan. We've already, uh, paid, uh, grave engineering, uh, for that. So we'll be working with them to get a twenty-year master maintenance plan.
Okay, and then we'll better know how to budget.
Correct.
Going forward. So you said we're pursuing, so two point five to three million and we are pursuing insurance and FEMA funds?
Correct.
That'll help on this? Okay. We need to protect our assets? All good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Um, do you need further direction on develop conceptual site plan for North Ward School rehabilitation?
No.
I mean, I think at this point it's a site plan or it's conceptual planning. So the results of that will be brought to you, you know? You know, so I think at this point, a study is, um, Gina.
Uh, good morning, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development. The actual first step really would be engaging an architect to do plans for us. So there would be really two phases. One would be the design services and then once we have that, then some, uh, projections would come back for the actual construction. Our goal is to engage a historic preservation architect who can come up with ideas, as Michael said, to make the building more attractive for immediate occupancy while also preserving the ability, uh, for the future, um, leaseholder or purchaser to be able to get federal tax credits if they'd like to pursue that. So we want to make sure that we don't do anything to the building that would, um, limit a developer's opportunity for funding.
Councilmember Albritton?
Is that, is that in the CRA?
It is in the North Greenwood CRA and it's also in the downtown plan area.
We ought to.
I'm thinking the same thing.
Bump that up and.
If it's possible, right? You're talking about including the CRA budget?
Well, just.
If it's po, if it's feasible, especially since it's in both CRAs?
Um, in, in the downtown plan, this was something that, you know, the plan that was adopted in twenty eighteen supports. I think another consideration is that you have a historic building that is sitting there vacant and that is going to deteriorate as it sits there. Um, there's going to be humidity issues and things of that nature that could, um, cause building damage. And I think we're trying to be mindful of, of making sure that while it's sitting there vacant, it doesn't deteriorate.
Because it is an asset, yeah.
It is. It's a National Register Designated Property.
Well, I think we should spend money to make sure it, it's sound and we can protect our asset. But whether we spend, I mean, money on a conceptual plan and all that, can't we leave that up to somebody who's interested in actually occupying it?
I, I think that item really is a little mischaracterized. It's not developing a site plan. It's developing some building improvements.
Okay.
Not an actual.
Okay, okay.
Do we have a general number in your head?
I don't yet. Um, our plan was to, um, add, uh, to our Architect of Records. Our plan was to add to our architect of records, people with historic preservation experience and then engage them very carefully to look at what kind of improvements could be done without impacting the ability of someone to get federal tax credit. So that may be something about conditioning the space, ADA accessibility, that sort of thing.
What would the cost of that be?
At this point, we don't know. So the first step would be to engage a design professional.
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think, are we in agreement that we need to protect our assets? The city's assets? I think this is a big asset here, a potential for a lot of economic activity in the CRA. It's a beautiful location. It flows nicely with Seminole boat dock and stuff. I mean, it's a great.
It's good. It's got potential.
We do need to protect it, so.
And there have been very successful projects, taking historic schools and turning them into apartments and, you know, making it really nice.
We in agreement?
I'm surprised there hasn't been more interest so far.
Me too. It'll come. Okay. Good with direction on that, protecting?
Right.
Okay. Intelligent transportation system. This just does, still creating a scope for citywide implementation funded in the short term. I was wondering if this was part of that ARPA funding for, you know, traffic control or whatever we had that big chunk? Go ahead.
Yes, the 3.5 is all ARPA money and that's to upgrade our fiber, our traffic management room in the MSB. Or we want to be more integrated with the county system. And we're going to focus on some high priority corridors, beach downtown, to be prepared for events with Magic Clearwater.
Okay. So then, so help me understand where you've got underfunded 3.5 million still creating. Is, are these ARPA funds?
The 3.5 is ARPA. So then obviously we have those deadlines that will meet.
Right.
Underfunded is more of part of the big picture. 3.5 will not be enough to do the entire city of Clearwater.
Okay.
So as we move forward, you know, we may have other phases of this and come back to you for that.
Okay.
But this is a long term, right?
Yes, very long term.
Okay. So what I'm hoping is that the 3.5 is enough in the next year or two.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. It is. And in fact, as you know, the ARPA deadlines are uncovered by '24, spent by '26. But we will need more funds to do this big picture.
Okay.
Okay, so then we keep.
All good.
And we need to be moving forward in that direction with the county.
Absolutely. Good, Kayleen?
Okay.
Okay. State Street Park Site Development and Renovations. This is funded, 700,000. This is ARPA funds. Do we need to have a discussion about this? All good? Okay. Everything, all right, so anyone want to make comments on municipal services, building renovation? So we've given direction that the new city hall, so this is going to be, so if we have currently available 2.0, you know, over $2 million here in approved future funding, so we have 5 million towards that already, right? That we can knock off of the cost of? No? Okay.
Well, again, that's kind of the conversation of it was more than just MSB.
Oh, that's right. It was the police, yes. That's right.
And it was renovation of cubicles and interior furnishings. So some of that would be freed up. We could probably lower the future funding amount that's in the capital plan.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense.
Bring that back and let us know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Like furnishing, would that be a priority for MSB if we're going to have a new city hall the next two, three years and then do some furnishing then? Know what I mean?
Right, but it's not just, it's not just.
Right, I understand.
MSB, it's police, yeah.
Right.
Okay. All good for the next, yeah?
I just wanted to remind everyone that this is not just about the finances, but the staff was being run a little thin if we approve everything. So I think we do need to factor those things in too as we make these decisions.
Some of these are not all in one year. They're out over several years. So hopefully our staff deficits will change in the next year or so.
Also, so again, looking for direction from this, when we come back with a budget, what I've shared with staff is that then we will have to say the resources that are necessary to accomplish all of this, which could include additional FTEs. I'm not saying it will. But that's what this is. So as you approve or not these things, then staff will respond in terms of saying this is not only the money that is needed, but the staff resources that are also needed to do this.
Then we have another decision to make then.
Correct. Yeah. So this is just the beginning portion of the budget process. We're going to build it around there. We'll have funding, we'll have staffing, we'll have all of that stuff that moves forward. So, you know, nothing in here can't be undone. And again, not that that's what we're looking for in terms of the back and forth, but there's still several steps in the process that you're going to have to, you know, continue to make these decisions, but this is what's going to guide our budget.
Okay. I had two at the bottom of my page, speaking of that, was staffing? Question mark, do we need more money? I mean, so we have 200 unfilled positions. So we have money sitting there that we should be paying people to do work. And, you know, do we need to increase pay to get positions filled? And, you know, that's part of, that's.
Sure. And that is on the operational list, in terms of operational priorities. We have the, you know, we are in the midst of having an outside company do the pain class study.
Right.
We don't know how much that's going to be.
Right.
Until that is done, but that will certainly, that's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
In terms of any pay deficiencies that we might have and have recommendations that come out of that. And then that would also.
Play into the.
Help in terms of filling any positions.
Right.
You know, we know that, you know, and then this is something else that I've shared with staff is that we know we will never be full. And that doesn't mean that shouldn't be our goal, but it's just not a reality. So again, as we're thinking about how to move forward with that, it'll be with all of those things in mind.
Okay. All right. Development of South Osceola Parking Garage, funded? We're all good? Any discussion on this item? All right. Underfunded. Fire Station 47 renovations and improvements. We have no comments in the comment forum. Do we want to? Oh. Chief Ellers, go ahead.
Good morning, Sky Ellers, Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. Fire Station 47 is one of these complicated projects that's going on. We've done a couple several things on this one. First of all, the Fire Station 47, the existing one off of Highland. When we built the current Fire Station 45 and moved it further east, it started to, they started to have more overlap. With that, also, Fire Station 47 was built in 1974. It's deteriorated to a point where, you know, we're going to have to dump some money back into it. We've been holding off as much as we can. One of the major things going on with it right now is the roof has got to a point where you can see sky through it. And as we continue to try not to dump good money into something that we're going to get rid of, we had started this project several years ago in regards to Fire Station 47 moving a little further east, which helps fill the gap over that and I'll explain in a minute. But it also, we were moving quite well with that project. At the 60% drawings were within budget, but then just like Fire Station 46, the, that demand hit and the prices, construction prices went through the roof and the same thing happened here. So we were right where we needed to be back a couple of years ago. When it went out above that, the budget that we had, we were asked to put it on hold to see if maybe things would come back down. And it really hasn't. It stayed the same. So with that, we're about 2.6 million underfunded. Again, Fire Station 47, we have the property for us right there across from Clearwater High School, right there off of Hercules. That's been purchased, that's been, we took the old church down, it's all ready. This is a simple one compared to Fire Station 46 since it's a slab-on-grade type of construction. Nothing much more than that. But hopefully what it does also, because again, the question comes up as we continue down the road with response, we have that gap over there off of US 19 that becomes more problematic with traffic on meeting the response times. So with this movement further east, it potentially, doesn't say it does, but it potentially helps alleviate some of that where we have another station over in that area. But we just don't know until we actually have it in place. So again, this is for Fire Station 47, just under, just about $2.6 million underfunded.
So $2.6 million underfunded for a rebuild across from the high school?
Brand-new station, that's correct.
Because this says renovations and improvements, but we're talking about construction.
A new construction, yes, ma'am.
Only 2 million, only a little, 2 and a half million underfunded for brand-new construction? What's the timeframe of that?
Very similar to 40, well, we were only at 60% drawings, so we would have to get, if we instill this project again, we would have to get to 90% drawings, 100% drawings, get it through the process. But just like Station 46 is going, they're predicted, it's about 18 months. 46 is coming in right about, right about 16 months. So they had a schedule in 46, which is a good thing. So somewhere in about a year, year and a half to build it.
Any thoughts or questions on this? I mean, we have so much set aside that we've already. You think we should pull back on it? What do you think, Councilmember Bunker?
You say you're, no. You know, I would like to see a new fire station. And we've been putting this off. I'd like to see it happen. I'm not sure that we can handle it right now. How say you folks?
Any thoughts, Councilmember Albritton?
Well, I remember when we bought the property and I understand the situation about moving it further east. I know we have a, even, weren't you looking at a site on, out toward US 19 as well?
That's correct. Yeah.
But I understand that everything has gone up considerably and then that last year or so with construction costs. I would be okay with, you know, maybe putting this off a little bit and seeing how the market fares in the next year. I'm hoping things will come down a little bit when they get the material shortages and things like that back on track. But, you know, it is a safety issue, which is always number one with me. But we seem to be, we seem to be doing okay with it, but I understand the other one. It's a hard one for me. I can go either way on it.
It is a hard one. Maybe if you could give us, I mean, I think we want to, the cost of a roof replacement. I mean, if they're seeing sky through the roof.
There's some places that they're actually being able to see sky through, okay? And again, the station is, it's not that it's, they have, the city hasn't taken care of it. It's just one of those, it's almost 50 years old. It was built in 1974, so again, being just over 60, I don't think that's very old, but for a fire station it is, it a little bit older. The station is, we just did a roof at 49 and it was a half a million dollars. So that, if you give it a roof, it's a different type of station, not as big, but that was the latest one we did and that was Fire Station 49.
You know, I'll get off the fence and say I'd like to see it happen.
Okay.
Safety is a priority. That's the first thing that everyone tells me is their safety. And I do think that having one more east will, I think, will help in more or quicker access. But I was thinking the same thing that you were saying, like, what would be the impact of just waiting a year and seeing if those costs can go down?
So we have.
And that's a question for you. What do you think of waiting a year? Do you think that it could go down in terms of cost?
Well, no, it's a good question and I don't know. I, we have, we continue to work with the construction firms for Fire Station 46 and they, you know, we ask that question quite often. We waited that year, year and a half already and they haven't. They've sort of steadied. You see some costs come down, but majority of it is sort of the scale of economy is catching up to where it jumped up to. It's not coming back down, is what they're saying. Some of the other fire station projects that they, they actually doing across the county, South Pasadena is one, again, seeing the same increases, significant increases as it moves forward.
Right, I agree. You know, it's highly unlikely they'll go down, but we don't know that. I don't have a crystal ball. Definitely steel, some of these major commodities are plateauing or even going down. But then unfortunately, labor and fuel has gone up. So my guess, and it already has slowed down considerably, but probably best hope is a plateau.
Steady.
So this came up on my PSTA board to put a new roof on the bus station and it was a half a million dollars on the one we're going to tear down. So I, I mean, we basically said, you know, that's not a good idea, but how about just patching the areas, see if we can get another year out of it? I mean, have you looked into just doing a patch on the areas to see if you can get another?
They have. They, we patched it and patched it. The roofers have, the last second, and I can get back with you on that, but we patched that roof over and over again to the point where they're like, you got to put a new roof on this.
Yeah.
Beyond that point of patching.
Well, I think we can, so if you've got direction that it's a priority, you come back with, these are the numbers and this is what it will take to make the numbers happen. Ms. Poirier, you got any?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Because it seems like, you know, I mean, truthfully, everybody's coming through here and I've seen this with, you know, different chip funding and all that stuff when people come and talk about their projects and it's all absolutely legitimate. And, you know, obviously if we had an endless pot of money, it would, we wouldn't have a meeting. Are you, are you getting enough information, Kayleen and Jennifer?
Yeah. And I think to the point of the station, if we broke ground tomorrow, you're looking at 18 months.
Right.
And we can't do that, so you're looking at two years. So we will probably have to put money into the roof even with, you know, moving this project along. But hopefully not a brand-new roof, just patches again.
Right.
But it still is a process to construct and still finish design. So it is, you know, it's, this is our estimate of projecting costs through that period.
And I think a 50-year-old station, it's time. A 50-year-old station, it's time for either, right? Okay. All right. You're good with direction on that? All right. Fire Station 48, burn tower renovations, oversized vehicle storage, it's funded. Are we all okay?
Yeah.
With that one? Again, I think, you know, oversized vehicle storage, protecting our assets is important. Okay. Beach Marina Upgrade Project, underfunded.
Councilmember Eric Dandy, Breeden Aviation Director. So this project is at 30% design. We have the construction manager on board. And what we did subsequent to my last conversation with you is incorporate an adjusted inflation at 20% and contingencies at 15%, which accounts for the gap. However, as you've heard from others, construction costs are obviously have increased. And ultimately, you know, this marina is about twice its expected lifespan. Those timber docks are expected to last about 20 years and these are 40 years old. Furthermore, the upland utilities are part of this project. So this is, you know, it's marina upgrades. This is a complete replacement of that marina, sidewalks, seawalls, utilities. We've had, since I've been there, at least two water leaks under the slab. It's old cast iron pipes feeding the docks and we regularly have to shut the power off because of high tides. So it's a huge project. With the construction manager on board, they're going to look at, these numbers are based on the engineer's estimate of probable cause, costs. And ultimately, the. the construction manager is gonna come up with some three different options. We've asked them to kind of get a better feel for what this number is really gonna look like. At sixty percent design and further, then we will have approached that time when we have a guaranteed maximum price. So, once the construction manager can go out and look at the subcontractors and all those things, it'll, you know, get closer to what we anticipate. But right now, it's just, as far as priority project, it's significant antiquated structure, the timber, and so on. I even brought a prop sheet, you need to see it, but it's, it's a challenge out there for my crews to consistently kind of hold things together. But we'll, we'll know more as we get those estimates from the construction manager. And we've, we've asked them to look at three options: floating concrete docks, aluminum, fixed timber, just to run the gamut, because we don't want to replicate the failures at the Harbor Marina with the floating concrete and substandard materials, which is a significant problem over there.
Did you say there are water leaks under the slab with high tides?
No, the water leaks are just the, the utilities, the water feeding our docks. So, our, our potable water pipes are from the fifties.
What are the effects of high tide, so you mentioned?
High tide, we have to shut the power off because-
You, they're too low, you've got a brace?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. And the voltage, we have two hundred and eight volts out there, and at the end of the docks, we're not getting that, so it, it can create problems with our tenants not having enough voltage to their vessels.
Comments, Councilmember Albritton?
So, we've been talking about this a long time. We've had one-on-ones, and I understand that, you know, there's options on how we're gonna be doing this. One of the options actually ties in one of the other items here, which is the parking garage, which, how, how long have they been talking about a parking garage there?
Yeah, I, I remember back maybe twenty fourteen, fifteen, there were some initial conversations and actual renderings that, that came out about a parking garage. For us, for selfish purposes, you know, our commercial tenants out there have structures that wouldn't be permissible now, and that's where they store materials to support their operations. And we, I think it's about five thousand square feet of storage. So for selfish reasons, we need that parking garage to, to basically accommodate storage, because that's permissible on the ground floor in the floodplain. But, you know, as I've spoken previously about, the demand out there is tremendous, and, you know, my staff has to put cones behind our parking spaces, because people will just take the ticket, because it's, it's worth it. So, it's, it's definitely, you know, a, a project that kind of goes hand in glove with the marina redevelopment project. But of course, you know, for, for me, the, the initial priority is replacing what I know has to be replaced.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
So the, the total we're, we're looking at on that particular option is somewhere around forty-five million dollars. It's forty for the parking garage, five that we're short on the marina project upgrade.
Yeah, certainly parking can speak more. They've been doing all the legwork on the parking garage component. The marina's around thirty-four million with about a six million dollar shortfall or so. So that's, that's where we are in, on the marina part of this. Parking garage, as you know, came in later, so it hasn't, the, the plans and the discussions over that and the budget haven't developed and haven't matured like the marina project. So it's, it's kind of two separate projects, but they're intertwined.
Right. So, I guess my question would be, and maybe our question would be, are there any other funding sources available for that project? Federal, state?
So, yes, and, and Ms. Call spoke to it very early on, but we have pursued a couple of different things for the marina project specifically. There's some grant money available, however, when you look at, it's about one point two million is our ask. We have a grant being reviewed. The, the challenge is the condition. It's a twenty-year grant, and if, if there are certain restrictive conditions that are incorporated into the grant, we could get one point two, but lose about two million in potential revenue over the twenty years. So not a really good deal for us.
Is that federal?
It's, it's a, so the state FWC manages it, but it's the, a federal fisheries grant. So there's, there's some, we're like, we're waiting, we're gonna get the comments back and just see how it goes, and see what those implications are, working with the consultants on that, because it, it impacts us at the Harbor Marina, for instance. We have the same restrictions there. I could easily rent transient slips for months at a time, but we're restricted to ten days. So, we, we looked at it, we'd lose about a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year in revenue by accepting the grant. So it's, it, so that's one piece. We're, we're gonna wait and see what happens with that. The other, and as soon as TDC publishes their updated grant application procedures, I've been waiting for, for months and, and had some conversations that indicated that it should be happening shortly. Once TDC publishes it, I think the commercial fleet, because it's tourism-centric, fits nicely and dovetails nicely with the TDC's purpose in that potential funding. So, you know, my ask of them eventually, when we get the, the process solidified, is for the funding of those commercial slips. We're looking at maybe three to five million dollars of an ask.
Oh, good.
So, I would be fine with the beach marina upgrade project, not sure about the parking garage component. That'd be one of them that we maybe look at later.
Any comments on that? Agree? Okay.
And the garage will come up later as well, and I'll be glad to speak to that again.
Good, Kailene? With that? Okay. CRA, Container Village program, we talked about that. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I would like to see that happen. It's coming out of the CRA fund. I, I visited the crate up in Wesley Jackal, isn't it? And a very popular place, and a very affordable way for people to start a business.
The rent's about fifteen to eighteen hundred.
Right.
That's, that's very low for retail.
So, I, I think it would be very helpful as we get this new CRA going.
Okay, and this is just allocation of ARPA funding, so it's-
Right.
Correct?
Mm-hmm. All right, installation of solar arrays on specific city facilities, this is funded, two million dollars. So for about every million we spend on solar, we get back a hundred thousand dollars in savings a year. So we have almost three million dollars. Where's the other million-ish for solar? So there was a federal grant, and then there were-
Grant we just recently rece, well, initial notification from-
Oh, that we haven't received it yet?
Haven't received it yet. So just remember, when we receive federal appropriations, they're actually, we're working a year ahead of time for the request, so we won't get the actual funding until the next fiscal year.
Okay. Well, good, good. And this is a nice line item, because we save money. Spend money and save big money, which is good. Any comments about that line item? Go forward with that? Fantastic. Cooper's Point, Habitat and Water Quality Improvements, this is huge. This is, you know, part of what we talk about at Tampa Bay Estuary Program, and, you know, does anyone want to speak to this one or have questions? Go ahead, Tara.
Tara Kivitt, City Engineer. Yep, this project is for design and construction of water quality and habitat improvement in Cooper's Point and beyond. We would accomplish that with increased tidal flushing around Cooper's Bayou, construction of mangrove shells, mangrove shells, sorry, addition of seagrass and salt marsh habitat, and installation of sediment removal boxes. And as Vice Mayor Beckham pointed out, it does align with Tampa Bay Estuary Nitrogen Management Consortium to reduce nutrients in Old Tampa Bay, and aligns with the Tampa Bay reasonable assurance. We are looking for some grant funding for this. Because of the magnitude of dredging that it would be required, right now swift mud is, is not quite as supportive as we would like, because they're just not getting the bang for the buck that they want. Oh, sorry, and the project also includes significant recreational components: platform walkways, trails, kayaking, observation decks. So again, that, that also is part of the cost.
So you don't have a guess on what the ask would be at a general fund?
Well, right now, none of it's funded. Stormwater could, could definitely fund a good portion of this, but no, we haven't gotten into the nitty-gritty of, of what that would look like.
Well, grant funding generally requires a buy-in, so I'd like to get those figures back. I think it's a good project. I'm not saying don't do it, but I think we have a lot of information that needs to be brought to us, in my opinion.
I would agree, and I would, this is something that Ed Sherwood, the Director of Tampa Bay Estuary Program, mentions frequently about funding opportunities for Cooper's Point and the work that, that you all have talked about. So, yeah, if there's match opportunities and things like that, I think we, we need to start, because it's a long, it's a big process. Any other questions on Cooper's Point? Okay. The streets and sidewalk replacement construction is funded, and that was part of, that's ARPA funding that's there, even though it's not indicated, but is that what we mean?
That's really the ongoing, the ongoing project that we fund every year, but it's, it's very political. We talk a lot about streets and sidewalks, and, so it's on this list because-
For the record?
Yeah.
Whatever we're doing.
And it's, it's a, it's a lot of money that we spend annually, and what we plan to spend annually, so there was an ARPA piece as well.
Okay.
Sidewalks are a liability issue.
Absolutely. Well, and I think we, as we saw with that backlog, we need to start funding a little more each year for, for that maintenance.
And the ADA project, kind of, it all is hand in hand.
Okay. All right, let's continue on. Everybody good?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a comment. So it looks like we're pretty much in alignment with staff recommendations, correct?
Well, these weren't staff recommendations, though.
These were not?
Well, I mean, as far as the priorities, but when I asked is, you know, we can't fund everything under the priorities, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, so if, if we're pretty much saying yes to a lot of it, I guess the next part is we need to-
Narrow it down?
Yeah. So this is just step one, right? Just saying what we think is important, and then we're gonna keep narrowing that list, because we're not gonna have this deficit. You can't fund all this.
No.
Well, and some of, and most of it-
Is over years.
-is gonna be when they bring back and say, here, the, because there's a lot of-
Exactly.
-numbers in here that aren't here, that we think the project's good, but would like to have some more information to, to actually say yes, so.
So, what I interpret to do from this is that we're gonna build a budget around it. And so, yes, you are saying yes to, to most of this, which then has that, you know, that deficit. In terms of, you know, Jay, I don't know if you want to talk about, or Kailene, how we'll do this in terms of next steps, but similarly to how he started this off, in terms of what we'll be proposing, I mean, I don't know how there could not be either bonds or mileage increases, or it's just not going to be possible to not do that if you continue to say yes to everything.
That's what I was hearing. I was hearing yes to everything, and then looking at the two hundred and fifty million dollar deficit, and we're not, we're not shaving off anything here.
Yeah, but some of this is, we're not sure about. They're putting the total funding deficit in there if the, you know, as a, as it is without any kind of grant funding or apartments paying for it, or whatever.
To help staff with staff direction, Councilmember, you have to assume if the grant funding is not received, and the city would either decide to move forward with the project and pay for that gap, or push the project over. And I think that's what staff is needing in terms of the project, because everything looks like it's pretty much been blessed. But there has to be further direction, I think, for staff. So, like the city manager said, well, from this point forward, staff will build a budget around what you're saying is a priority, but at the same time, I think council needs to understand, well, if there is grant funding, if we don't, if we're not successful in that grant funding, what is the next step? Does, does staff just move through with it, because we'll have to fund it anyways, or push the project over?
Well, do you want like the top five? Like, we could narrow it down to the top five, top three? I mean, you know, the City Hall and development of new public works is huge. And so if we give direction on those are our top two, is that what you need? Do you need more than that? Because then, everything else you can, we can fit in in some kind of a list of the cost, and then how, how it affects our budget, and then go through then.
Right. I think that just the conversation that we're having is exactly what we need, because we have to go back and look at it and figure out your funding plan. We can't do that today. But if we know this is what you want us to build, then that's what we're gonna, we're gonna do, and then we're gonna show you what that looks like, because there is, there is increased general fund cost. There, you know, there, and then you might change your mind. I mean, you know, like, but we, yeah, so we have to have time for that process to kind of look at all of our options and explore grants or whatever, and then we'll bring these things back to you for you to see what, how we would propose it, and how we would propose, you know, over a certain amount of years, how we would propose to maybe advance funding and penny, things of that nature. That's what we need, a little time in the next few months to kind of, to fine-tune these priorities.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, so again, you'll have plenty of opportunities to change your mind throughout. Just understand in terms of staff resources, and even, you know, some of these things, we will have to spend money to vet, and that's what we will be-
Exactly, yeah.
-going through. And that's the purpose for things like, you know, where it might just kind of be a study now, but we say TBD, because that study gives you a bill.
Right, right.
You know, and so those are the things that will keep coming back, and that's why they're on this page, even though we can fund the study, or we might have already funded the study, but it's for you to know that this total isn't necessarily a hit, because some of these things create more. And so that's kind of the purpose of having this in front of you with a price tag that we, you know, the little bit that we can tell you. You know, there is blanks, we don't know in some.
So, I think the next bite of the apple's gonna be more telling than this is, to tell you the truth, because it's gonna give us more information to make those decisions on.
Right. Like Jay, the general fund forecast, you know, so, you know, when we, we would bring back a new general fund forecast showing you the impact of, of how we would fund some of these things.
Over a number of years, yes, for sure.
It's ten years, you know, that we present to you on a regular basis.
Okay. Do you want us to go through the second tier?
Is there anything that stands out to you? I mean, maybe that would be-
Okay.
I just have a question about the McMullen Tennis Complex renovations. Does that include pickleball? Because I get citizen comments all the time about pickleball.
Art?
Do we know?
It says tennis complex, not pickleball complex.
I know, but there's been conversations of transferring some of those tennis courts to pickleball.
I know, I know.
It does, yes. We're looking at it. It is, it is a project that is out at least five years, six years from now, though.
Okay.
We're not, we do play that now. We are putting pickleball courts around the city to meet some of those needs, to Royal Park, Soul Road Park, Polar Beach, Rec Center, that's one of the projects that right now is a little bit underfunded, but we hope to be able to do that this next year.
I have a question about the design and construction of the K-9 kennel at District Three Operation and Training Center that's not funded. I mean-
Morning, Council.
Hi.
Deputy Chief, please.
It, it's, so it's not funded. It's, it's not a dire necessity right now?
Well, the kennel that we have currently is, is old, it's outlet, it's lifespan. It is still working, but it definitely needs some safety for the dogs and some rehabilitation. We tried to use the large vehicle storage fund out of it, but it just doesn't have enough. The prices we received were one point five to two million dollars.
Okay. And then the police department- And then the police department oversized vehicle storage. Again, it's funded, and that's to protect our asset, correct?
Correct. We just tried to find a spot for it.
Any questions on anything else on this page?
I think Tara, maybe just the garage, the parking garage at...
Thank you, Deputy Chief. The parking garage?
The Marina, just Tara has a few points.
The $40 million develop of Marina parking garage?
I would just like to fine tune direction on, is that a number one priority to move forward to align with the beach marina? Or you want this to be a lower tier? But we're looking at, we just did a performa, and we got a cost Friday of 36 million?
Well, I mean, you have to think about things, you know, is it going to cost more to add it on later? Is there, you know, there'd be significant disruption both during the marina reconstruction and then if we add on the parking later? You know, is there some economies of scale for doing them together? Right? All those kinds of things?
There's house sports, right?
Can they actually occur simultaneously in terms of logistically? Have the parking garage being built at the same time as the marina? Or is that a little bit too difficult on the day-to-day?
Anything's possible. I mean, my preference would be to get it done sooner than later, just to minimize the long, drawn-out impact to the, to the commercial fishermen and...
Well, sure, in a perfect world.
Right. You know, even back when we started Cleveland Streetscape, we were looking at doing that in phases, you know, at the initial phase one. And the businesses said, no, let's take less time, impact us for less, and do it all at once.
Well, you know, again, it'd be, first of all, it'd be great to have a pot of money, do it all at once. Secondly, it'd be good to have, you know, the dollar amount of doing it in two different phases versus doing it all at once. But is that, you know, are we paying, how much money are we paying for that information? Is there a cost to that information? Or is that going to be part of the information we'll be getting when we make dollar decisions? Will we have it or not really yet? Like, it's this cost to build them together, this cost to build them separately, this cost just to do the marina and, you know?
Timing would not affect, in my opinion, the overall budget of either project. It would just really more affect the...
Inconvenience?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, well...
I would keep it in the second tier, I wouldn't put in the first.
I agree. What do you think?
I mean, we need the marina repairs, but the garage should be lower priority than the repairs. That's my opinion.
Good, Kayleen? With that? Okay. Jennifer, go ahead. Way right in, come on in.
So this is, this is helpful. Just a couple of things, I want to make sure that we have an understanding. The very first page where it talks about the operational priorities, we do have consensus to continue to work on all of these and go back into the budget, correct?
Yes, with the understanding that we know we can't have them all. I mean, or all at once, or all, you know, I mean, what is your understa, because, yeah, go ahead.
No, I just want to make sure that we're building all of this stuff into the budget. A lot of this, what's in here is, this would be this year. Now, some of them would extend into other years, but it will be done this year. So I just, I want to make sure that we are moving forward with all of those things as well.
What do you guys think? Well, and you know, when we look at this document, you know, about, most of them fall under high performing government, you know, deliver effective and efficient services by optimizing city assets and resources. I mean, that's, that's what we need to do for our residents, correct?
I don't think we can afford to do it all. Do you want us to narrow it more today?
Well, I mean, it's completely up to you all. Like I said, we can build it off of what we've been given. I think some, you know, if that's what the direction is, and that's what we're going to do, and we'll come back, and again, you have plenty of opportunities to then whittle it down from there if that's what you want us to do. As I mentioned at the beginning of this, we have new asks that are coming in. And that's at, that's for additional programs, additional facilities. And, you know, what I feel like we're getting from here is that we want to focus on what we have. And so perhaps, you know, like I mentioned, it's almost to the tune of 40 million for the additional asks that we have right now, a lot of it being new, not maintaining. And so the direction would be to push back on the new stuff and focus.
That's coming, that's coming.
Yeah, you have seen it.
Right, right.
And focus on what we have here and provide that first before we add anything additional to it.
Yeah, the thing that makes it difficult is that a lot of these things we've been discussing for years.
No.
And I'm really beginning to hate that phrase. We've been talking about it for years. And then the other half are things that need to be taken care of because we've ignored it for many years. And it's, and our assets are falling apart.
Right.
And so it's hard in my mind to keep narrowing it down.
I agree.
But I feel your pain, like, you know. But if you want us to narrow it down more today, like, be clear, we will do it.
Well, like I said, I think, you know, staff has indicated we have a direction. I mean, you're certainly welcome to cut. We'll be, you know, we will accept removing some priorities if that's what you want us to do or if you want us to move forward, this is helpful. What we really needed to get out of this, obviously, was getting, you know, our plan so then we can tie all of our budget objectives into that. And then we'll bring this forward. It's just, as we have these conversations and you think about other things that you want to add, understand why we can't, because we have all of this. And I will tell you that, you know, we have fully vetted the new stuff that's coming forward, but those are good things, too. That's why I knew this was going to be difficult. You know, a lot of the stuff in here is not want to do, their need to do.
They are need to do.
And so, you know, like I said, well, we will bring this forward, and then you will have additional things to talk about. But you'll have a better understanding in terms of the difficulties, in terms of what this budget is going to look like.
Can we get guidance from, from city staff leaders on how they would prioritize it?
Well, that's what we did.
So that's it, that's your final?
Yeah, well, but I mean, like, and this is, this is based on, you know, what we've heard and based on the document in terms of what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, other than, you know, looking at strategic areas, whether it's downtown or the neighborhoods, you know, you can always bring a lens like that to some of your prioritization as well.
If I could just highlight one more item on the second page. Construction of Osceola Street improvements. So this is, this is one of the new projects. When she talks about new projects brought forward, this is one that's actually on here because it's been discussed. And this is because of the park, spending the money. And so that's what this project is. So it's a little bit of a nice to do. You know, when you go and you do major roadwork, then you do all the utilities that makes sense at the same time. But that's one that's a little bit of a nice to do, that's kind of a scope for you to say, yeah, we built this $85 million park, we should make the road. So that's kind of one where, when we talked about scope and... So that is on two, but we didn't specifically talk about it. But I think that one might be one to just highlight for direction if that's a project that you would like us to pursue and likely sooner rather than later.
Well, and we kind of discussed that, too, on the dais when people were saying, what are you going to do about traffic? Well, we're going to improve the road.
And that's why it's on the list. It was presented to us as a new project, but it had been discussed, you know, from the dais. And again, it's because of the success of the park, you know. It's a project, go ahead. It is mostly paid from utilities, you can see on that page.
Right, it would mostly be covered by enterprise funds. Rich would like to bring reclaim water into that area and to support the bluff development. You know, their agreement requires some public realm improvements, so it would all be part of that.
Could we scale it back a little bit and just, you know, take off almost 2 million or 1.5 and have just enterprise funds cover it all instead of 1.687 from general funds? I mean, I mean, give us the budget version versus the perfect version right now?
We could look at that as a way to bring some costs down, but I doubt it would change significantly.
Cost savings, yeah, okay. I mean, it might be part of doing it right with, you know, the opening of the park. But, but again, wants and needs. Go ahead, Kayleen.
Oh, I just, Jennifer had brought back, you know, like, the things that are on the first page. And there are a few things of note that I would just like to kind of bring to your attention because it's not where we itemize it on the second list. So when we, when we're looking at this big figure of all these capital projects, you have Phillies negotiations on this front page.
Yeah, no kidding.
And so that's a big one, too. So, I mean, again, when we're focused on this number, this number isn't necessarily just it because there are things on the front page that have the potential to be large price tags. So that's why that is a TBD. We don't really know. And there is, the current funding that's set aside based on the, you know, a few years ago when we were having this discussion, is on the penny list. Somewhere between 10 and 16 million is what was set aside for that based on future or prior negotiations. Another TBD on this page, and it was mentioned earlier, was the city classification and compensation study. So there's a few things on here that potentially are high dollars. It's just, you know, capital projects are easier to quantify.
Yeah.
I would have hoped the Phillies would have given us that number by now. It would have been easier for us to budget.
It might, but I think it's more important that they see this before they, before they have an ask. I think it's really important that they see this page, this first page, and, you know, our assets and protecting our assets and our understaffing and all those things before they, you know, sit down and have an ask. This is the reality of living in a coastal city with all these assets and our obligations as a city government to take care of residents and businesses and our infrastructure. That's our first, you know, obligation, yeah.
So again, I'm going to go back to the first item on the list, City Hall. You know, when I ran the first time, that was on my, that was one of my platform, is to finally get a City Hall. And so it didn't happen right away. But now I see why council always puts it off.
Yeah, no kidding.
But we've got a, we've got a, Clearwater is a city that needs a City Hall. And so I know it's a staggering number. If we would have done it 20 years ago, it wouldn't be that number. It would have been a lot less. And, you know, when I take that out of there, everything else seems to fall in pretty good. But I'm going to maintain, and, and, you know, I think we need to have a new City Hall. And I've been kind of embarrassed that we're, you know, we're in an office building when we have municipalities around us, smaller ones I might add, that are putting a lot of money into, and you could tell us how much money they're putting in. But, and here we remain in an office tower, you know?
And I'll share this with you after the meeting. But I did a little research, and you've got Largo. Their project's 81 million, construction at 70 million. They're looking at a 90,000 square foot structure. Their's is big, they've got a parking garage also. They're looking at lead platinum. Dunedin just opened, as you know, theirs was 22 million at 39,000 square feet. Their City Hall was built in '66. Largo's was constructed in '76, and ours was constructed in '64.
Yeah, and I did some numbers, too, on Dunedin, Largo, and Clearwater, and had Dunedin paid about 589 a square foot, Largo's 806 a square foot or so, and ours looks like it might be 818 a square foot. So it's not out of, you know, whack.
Monamaker Jensen, the costs we shared with you, they took both Largo's and Dunedin's and escalated it out for construction two years from now, and that's how we got that square foot cost.
I know the optics can be misleading, putting so much emphasis on the new City Hall when you see all the other things. But it's not the full picture. The full picture is that that number one priority has been pushed down the street for years. So when I, in my mind, every time it's been done, to me, becomes higher priority because we've already said no so many years. And our City Hall is going to be all encompassing. So again, I agree. I know it's a big ticket item, but we've pushed it down the hill too long.
Oh, I, Kayleen, and I think Lena's council member to shade has asked this, too, but I just want to make sure. So we've given you commentary on everything on this front page and a couple, you know, a couple little bit of comments on some things on the second page. Are we taxing staff, overtaxing staff in giving this direction by not narrowing it down a little bit more? Or is it a realistic expectation for you to come back and develop a budget, a 10-year budget with our direction on the front page?
I think it's a realistic expectation. It's just, you know, it's, we have to take the time to figure out how we would accomplish these tasks, and we need time to do that. And then you're going to see what that looks like. And so, I mean, I think that this is the direction we need. So we're not sitting in a room saying, what do we do? Should we add this or should we not? So we have the collective from you that this is what we would like to do, and that's kind of our marching orders.
Okay. So my goal is to always make your jobs easier and clear direction that doesn't waffle and go back and forth unexpectedly. If something comes up and there's, you know, unforeseen circumstances that we need to adjust, that's one thing. But giving direction and then, you know, not holding to it, I think, is important, barring something unexpected. So I hope you have direction on just developing the budget projections and how things will fit together, correct?
Yes.
And when do we anticipate those first meetings about the budget?
So we typically, the budget is released by July 1st. So that's when we would have a preliminary budget to you. I am planning to bring a council discussion item for your specific budget and things that we've been talking about, like the asks from the community for direction from you collectively on what you want in the council-specific budget. So I'm going to bring that forward, I think, maybe the second meeting in May. And so that's that kind of small piece of it. And so we're just going to be working toward creating a preliminary budget. And, you know, if there's something that you want us to bring forward earlier, then, you know, when you see that release, you know, let us know if there's something specific.
And, you know, so for example, with this direction now, we can move forward with some of the RFQs that we've been holding off because we weren't sure, you know, we didn't want those to hit the street and off. Know if that's, you know, something that's even viable. So those are the types of things that we can move forward with to help have better information as well.
Good.
So we will be working on those.
Anything else for the meeting?
There's another agenda.
Yes, there's the long-term, if you, so we have a third agenda item. If you're ready.
The long-term financial forecast for general fund and major utility funds? Yeah, sorry. Oh, okay. Could we pause a moment, Mr. Radens? All right, so we'll take a five-minute break? Thank you.
Thank you.